This is absolutely the right thing that we do and I want to thank Councilmember Rosendahl for bringing this forward. This is right, this is fitting, that we take a portion of that boulevard, of Lincoln Boulevard, and name it Officer Tommy Scott Square. We're going to have a sign that's erected so that all those who pass by will know that his memory, particularly his bravery and his courage, will be remembered. What he did that day was certainly a very courageous thing. It took a lot of bravery. He actually tried to stop a carjacking that was going on and lost his life doing that, all the while protecting LAX. And he was, as was said, such a fine officer, such a fine officer. And he really earned the respect and the admiration of his peers, particularly with his friendly disposition. Many people tell me Tommy always had a smile on his face. He was always welcoming. He had a great knowledge of airport operations. He really was the consummate airport police officer. He was the first officer, first airport police officer, to lose his life in a line of duty. So it was a very, very tragic situation. I went back to Washington DC during the National Week of Police Officer Awareness where there is a memorial back there. And it was right after he had been killed and his family was there, his father was there. And it was a very moving tribute to him as well, along with all the fallen police officers in this country. The airport police officers are a great law enforcement agency. You are charged with protecting the welfare of not only the traveling public, but really just of the whole entity of the LA International Airport. Your job, particularly since 9/11, has been more difficult. It has been more trying and stressful. And yet you have all served this city with such distinction. In fact, you've had national recognition as being one of the leading law enforcement agencies in the country. And other airports have modeled their airport law enforcement agencies after ours. So we thank you on a daily basis for what you do. But this will be a way that we will honor the memory and the courage of Officer Tommy Scott, but in a way will be remembering that all the officers' bravery and courage is something that we should continually notice, recognize, and more importantly, we should appreciate. And we owe you all a great debt of gratitude.
With that, let's go ahead and make this action official. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you, and we will send that forth with...
Due to the high cost of fuel, many people have turned to bicycles. And the Chair of the Transportation Committee, District Two Councilmember Wendy Gruel, talks about the feasibility of creating a bicycle sharing program.
Colleagues, this item before us is on bicycle sharing. And many of you in this room have supported the importance of utilizing bicycles in our city. And due to the high cost of fuel prices and the efficiencies difficulties of traveling by car, many people have turned to bicycles. And the estimates that we see is there's about a 25% increase in bicycling in Los Angeles. Bike stores have seen an increase in sales. I know just anecdotally, driving down the street, I've seen more bicycles than ever before. Here in the city, we need to do everything we can to support different modes of travel and transportation and to get people out of their cars. We are updating our bicycle plan. We are updating our Bicycle Advisory Committee, Mr. Reyes's motion that we heard just a week or so ago. And we're working in pilot programs in Mr. Garcetti's district on sharrows on city streets as well. We have a long ways to go to be a bicycle city. And I heard in our committee, as Mr. Rosendahl was there as well, and Mr. Alakon, that there are a lot of people who are part of the advisory committee or part of this countywide bicycle coalition, who want to make sure that not only we encourage people to take bicycles to work, but that we create an environment that is safe for them. And that before we begin too expansive of a program to ensure that bicyclists can feel safe on the streets of Los Angeles. And so when I was in Colorado and saw the many bicycles that were provided for that event, for people to utilize on special events, I think it's demonstrated that there are options, whether it be for special events or pilot areas, that we can encourage bicycle sharing here in the city of Los Angeles.
Encouraging the Planning Department and the Department of Transportation to work together in developing a new bicycle plan. District One Councilmember Ed Reyes asks the bicycle coordinator for the city about interaction with other city departments.
But colleagues, we also have to be cognizant that we're working with a crew, about three individuals, maybe four? Why don't you come on up? And it is an issue that we need to address in the next few years as to how we strengthen the capacity of DOT staff as well as planning staff to put forth these recommendations. For example, we wanted to establish back in December bicycle boulevards as a traffic calming technique to serve and connect our neighborhoods. We wanted road modifications to make streets more efficient and safer for pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. We asked for bicycle stations that offer fast and expensive ways for residents to rent a bicycle and get from point A to point B for drop-off locations. We wanted to design streets to create safe access for motorists, pedestrians, and people of all abilities, and increase the number of bicycle racks citywide. So when we include these into our community plans, we want to have this workshop in District One as a model, or should I say, a demonstration project, because we need to go citywide. Would have been to put too much on the staff, but I understand other districts would also like the same type of analysis. So can you introduce yourself at the table? And I'm not running out of time, but...
This is Michelle Mallory, Senior Bicycle Coordinator with the Department of Transportation.
Michael Weno, I'm a Senior Transportation Engineer with DOT.
Are you seeing any more connectivity with CRA or the other departments that have an impact on our public right of ways? Is there any more dialogue being intensified?
It's actually gotten a lot better than it has been during the last few years. And bikes are certainly becoming very popular and a part of the mix. We actually just looked at some plans yesterday to include a bike facility in a CRA project. We have some recommendations and maybe some changes to how they're doing it, but they're coming to us and starting to talk about how they can integrate bicycles into the specific projects.
Is the MTA posture itself in any way that speaks to raising the priority of our bicycle plans and/or the directives that were made back in December regarding these improvements?
I wouldn't say that we're seeing a huge level of excitement about bicycling from the MTA. As a matter of fact, we're hearing that they're going to be a little tougher on their rules and regulations regarding bicycles and transit. They have a rule that doesn't allow bicycles on the trains during peak hours. They have very loosely enforced that, meaning they recognize that working folks need to be able to get on those trains and they've left them on the planes on the trains during peak hour. Rumor is they are going to start removing people from the trains. We also have been encouraging Metro through their technical advisory committee to upgrade their buses to include a triple bicycle rack rather than a double bicycle rack. And there's been a lot of resistance to doing that as well. So while there is certainly some funding available through Metro, there hasn't been an increase, nor is there an increase in real support for bicycling through the agency.
Considering safety for bicycle riders, District Eleven Councilmember Bill Rosendahl asks about the Bicycle Bill of Rights. He wants to know what the bicycle sharing program is all about.
And we're at the age now, obviously, where a bicycle is not only a pleasure sporting thing, but can truly be a mode of transportation as our gridlock continues. And also, it's, from a health standpoint, good for the bicycle rider as well as it is for the air quality, that they're not just polluting the air. So it's a big deal. As you and I both know, and I'm glad Mr. Reyes asked you to come up, Michelle, is the city needs to know we have a bicycle coordinator. There you are, and you've been at it for 15 years. I want to thank you for your support and help in our Mandeville Canyon situation as we're trying to work that out. We are moving forward with that. The Commissioner went up there, Paula Daniels, and my staff and the police, and we're trying to figure out how to make Mandeville Canyon more safe. One of the things we have to look at is safety of the bicycle rider. And that is my biggest issue, is their safety and their bill of rights. I know Ms. Gruel and I have been talking about the bicyclist's bill of rights, and we're looking forward to that coming before the committee and the council. Bicyclists come up to me every day and ask me, "Where are you with the bicycle bill of rights?" But this particular motion, and I just want to make sure we hear from you what it means to you. The motion basically says, "Information on a bicycle sharing program." What does that mean to you?
It means a program where we would allow people who actually didn't bring a bike or don't have a bike to go and check one out, ride it to a particular location, leave it, and then someone else could come and check it out and do the same sort of thing. It's almost like, probably the closest thing to it that we have is a cart rental at LAX. You know, when you pick up your baggage, you throw your credit card in there, you put some change in there, you get a cart. It's a very similar sort of concept that's been well received in Paris.
Also concerned about bicycle safety, District Three Councilmember Dennis Zein wants to know about licensing for bicycles and how it works, and offers a suggestion as to how the licenses for bikes might be issued.
I know there's many young people that ride bicycles. It reminds me of my young brother, who's now a senior citizen. He was involved in a bicycle crash when he was a youngster. Didn't have any identification. Do we still have licensing with the police department, or is there a licensing? Because what happens is someone is involved in a collision, a young person doesn't have a driver's license, police respond, they have an individual there, they may be knocked unconscious. Who do they notify? How they get a notification? And I don't really see us pushing, as we did in the past, bicycle licensing, which was done Saturday at the police station. Is there anything about licensing which you can check that number, find out who the relatives are, et cetera? Is there anything in place for that?
Yes and no. Per the municipal code, the city does still have a bicycle licensing ordinance. Bicycle licenses are obtained by patrons one of two ways. Either they are sold by the bicycle vendor at the point of purchase, which we understand is rarely done now, or they are sold by your local police division. There is not a set date or set time to get a license, and it's our understanding a number of police divisions are unable to sell licenses at their locations. So the program has been somewhat dormant for a number of years. Staff has made a report and recommendation to T Committee that has been on hold, Transportation Committee. So currently, the Bicycle Advisory Committee does not support the licensing program and would like to address identification of childrens in a different issue, in a different manner, rather than bicycle licensing.
How do they recommend identifying 10 or 12 or 13-year-old with identification?
There are a couple ways. We could work with LAUSD to develop some sort of program through them that would be a helmet, a sticker or something that goes within a helmet to be able to do that, something we discussed a little bit. At one point, LAUSD was interested in taking on the licensing program. We don't know if that is still the case. But it's something that's been on the table and off the table for a number of years now.
Encouraging staff to work with the Metropolitan Transit Authority, the MTA. District Four Councilmember Tom Labange wants to develop bike facilities at MTA stations and requests the Department of Transportation to make bike racks look like bike racks.
I want a friendly amendment that you looked at every, I'm working with MTA, every MTA site, that you create some type of bike facility at every MTA subway station, and may I add, light rail station in the city of Los Angeles. There's no reason, there's a lot of space there that's underutilized. And to create a bike shop, if you will, and allow entrepreneurship to take forth in this, it would be worthy of that. I don't know if we have it yet, but I've seen this in other cities. They have this, it's very popular in Berlin, in Paris, and we know how those cities have grown and their densities are different than we are at this point here. But it's worth looking into. But certainly getting a bike shop at every MTA subway station. You have your MTA days. We were out there, Ms. Gruel, there at the Universal City, and they had a little temporary bike shop. Put them there all the time. You know, if we're going to get there, put them there. Put more bike racks that look like bike racks.
Relaying a story about a serious accident between a bicyclist and a car that he witnessed, District Seven Councilmember Richard Alakon makes reference to the bicycle infrastructure and how important it is to some Los Angelinos.
It just dawned on me, didn't dawn on me, I've known for many years, but it just struck me again, how inadequate this city is in terms of its bicycle infrastructure. And it also, in this particular case, pointed out to me how important the bicycle infrastructure is for people who need to work. That we keep talking about housing jobs balance and putting housing where the jobs are and jobs where the housing is. But one of the best ways to do that is to have a well-defined bicycling infrastructure that is not just intended to help those who want to get healthy and have recreational use, but is intended for people in everyday use in an economy where gas prices are so high and where unemployment rate is higher than in our time in office and where people need alternative forms of transportation to be able to survive. It just seems to me we have to be much more creative and focus much more attention on our bicycle infrastructure. So while I agree that there is so much of a lagging in terms of what we need, that bicycle sharing in and of itself is not going to have great impact, nor are we in a position to design the full-out program, I absolutely believe that we can identify specific methods of using sharing in specific locations or on specific projects or on specific lines so that we can move toward a city that is much more bicycle-friendly, particularly for those who will be riding bikes to work. And so I urge you on, but I hope that it comes back with a positive attitude, not a negative attitude, that we're not ready for this, so let's not do anything. Let's find out what we can do, even if it's very small, and then grow it.
And with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much.
If you'd like to know more about the bicycle services in Los Angeles, such as bicycle maps, bicycle clubs, and other bicycle programs, log onto the web at bicyclela.org or dial 311, your one call to City Hall. LA City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline, the And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 AM. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 AM. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 3, 2008. On behalf of Chris Cowman and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
The Department of Public Works maintains and operates many facets of the city of Los Angeles on all levels, from below it, on it, and above it. Below, the city has 6,500 miles of sewers and 1,200 miles of storm drains that connect to the largest waste treatment facilities in the country. On it, 7,300 miles of streets and alleys with about 200,000 tunnels fixed and over 100 miles of streets resurfaced annually. From above, an urban forest of 680,000 street trees trimmed for beauty and healthy, clean air, as well as maintaining the 230,000 streetlights that light our 24-hour city. The Department of Public Works helped design and build 32 new libraries since 1998, 76 recreation and park projects, and a national award-winning wastewater treatment plant. The Department of Public Works striving to make the city of Los Angeles a home that future generations will cherish.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2008. We're here in the John Furrow Council Chamber in Room 340, City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The first Friday of the month, we migrate over to Van Nuys, to the Van Nuys City Council Chambers, but we are here in Council Chambers and want to welcome our public that is here today, as well as members of the public who are watching us on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live every council meeting and rebroadcasts each evening. If you're not close to a television, you can always use your computer or your telephone. With your computer, you can catch live streaming webcasts of the council meetings at lacity.org. Our archived footage of past council meetings is available there online as well, and through your telephone, you can call in and listen to audio proceedings of the council meetings at (213) 621-CITY. (213) 621-CITY. Our agendas are available also online, in person here in chambers, or through our city clerk's office. Those are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. If you'd like to be heard on any items, all items are open for public hearing either in committee or here in chambers. If they've already received a hearing in committee, it requires council member to reopen the hearing. Otherwise, if it is something that has not yet had a hearing, filling out a card in the back will automatically trigger a public hearing, so feel free to fill out a card and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'd be happy to incorporate you in today's proceedings. We also have a general public comment for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, and those can be filled out in the same way. Just fill out your name and put "public comment" in the upper right corner, hand that to one of our sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to include you. If you live closer to Van Nuys, we can hear your testimony from Van Nuys City Council Chambers, even when we're meeting here downtown, so please avail yourself of that if that is more convenient. And we are waiting one more council member. Pursuant to council rules, all council members should be here in their seats at the beginning of the scheduled meeting time. Council members Hahn, Weezer, Parks, Reyes, and Wesson are still late. I know that Mr. Wesson is still chairing a meeting upstairs, and I believe Mr. Reyes is with him as well, but Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Parks, we are waiting your presence to begin the meeting. This is our final quorum call for those three individuals. If we don't have a quorum in the next couple of minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you. Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2008. We're here in the John Furrow Council Chamber in Room 340, City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. The first Friday of the month, we migrate over to Van Nuys, to the Van Nuys City Council Chambers, but we are here in Council Chambers and want to welcome our public that is here today, as well as members of the public who are watching us on Channel 35, which broadcasts us live every council meeting and rebroadcasts each evening. If you're not close to a television, you can always use your computer or your telephone. With your computer, you can catch live streaming webcasts of the council meetings at lacity.org. Our archived footage of past council meetings is available there online as well, and through your telephone, you can call in and listen to audio proceedings of the council meetings at (213) 621-CITY. Our agendas are available also online, in person here in chambers, or through our city clerk's office. Those are made available 72 hours in advance, or 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. If you'd like to be heard on any items, all items are open for public hearing either in committee or here in chambers. If they've already received a hearing in committee, it requires council member to reopen the hearing. Otherwise, if it is something that has not yet had a hearing, filling out a card in the back will automatically trigger a public hearing, so feel free to fill out a card and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'd be happy to incorporate you in today's proceedings. We also have a general public comment for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless under our jurisdiction, and those can be filled out in the same way. Just fill out your name and put "public comment" in the upper right corner, hand that to one of our sergeants-at-arms, and we'll be sure to include you. If you live closer to Van Nuys, we can hear your testimony from Van Nuys City Council Chambers, even when we're meeting here downtown, so please avail yourself of that if that is more convenient. And we are waiting one more council member. Pursuant to council rules, all council members should be here in their seats at the beginning of the scheduled meeting time. Council members Hahn, Weezer, Parks, Reyes, and Wesson are still late. I know that Mr. Wesson is still chairing a meeting upstairs, and I believe Mr. Reyes is with him as well, but Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Parks, we are waiting your presence to begin the meeting. This is our final quorum call for those three individuals. If we don't have a quorum in the next couple of minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a quorum. Thank you. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Alakorn Cardiniss, Grolhahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendale seconds, without objection. Those two will be approved. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item number nine to next Tuesday, which would be October 14th.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing nine to the 14th of this month? Seeing no objection, so ordered. Next items?
Items noticed for public hearings, items one through five, the recommendation for council action is to continue the hearing and ordinance to October 29th.
Any objection, colleagues, to continuing the ordinances till 29th, keeping the public hearing open? If not, so ordered. Next items, please.
Next items, items six and seven are also public hearing items. They are ordinances, and I believe 12 council members will be present. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold those on the desk, as well as number eight, our commissioner. Other items?
Next items are items eight through 26. Those are items for which a public hearing has been held. Item 14, excuse me, item number nine has already been acted on, and item number eight is the commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yeah, we'll hold eight on the desk. Let's call 10 special for Ms. Hahn. Other items, specials, colleagues? Are there special items? We got 10 for Ms. Hahn. This is through 26 right now? If not...
And there are two reports on item number 26. A motion is required, and also on number 18, a report is to be submitted. HCED met this morning, and that recommendations are not in yet.
All right, let's hold 18 on the desk, and on item 26, we have, the two reports are from where?
From HCED and ITGS, and I believe both reports can be adopted.
Okay, let's move both reports, then. And Ms. Perry?
Yeah, on 26, Mr. Parks has asked that the motions on budget and ITGS be moved forward forthwith.
Okay, we'll move those. Thank you.
And also, Mr. President, on item number 22, I believe there is an amendment on that one...
To delete condition number four, please?
Yes.
Yes, without objection, we'll accept that as a friendly amendment. And let's take up the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All right, if we can send 24 forthwith, please, without objection, as well as number 15, without objection. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 27 through 47, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, do we have cards on any of those?
There are, and I didn't get the list, I apologize.
Okay, let me go through them, and then we have 27, card from the public. Looks like 33, 34, 37, and 38. And we'll go ahead and open and close the other public hearings. Ms. Perry?
He wanted 40 and 41 held on the desk.
All right, we'll call those special for Mr. Parks. So again, 40 and 41, please. And 39, if we can receive and file that, please. Mr. Labange?
27, I just want the numbers next to the authorization. If I get them on...
All right, we'll call that special for you, Mr. Labange, and we have that special for card from the public as well, so we'll make sure. Yes, Ms. Perry? I'm sorry, can we get Ms. Perry's microphone, please? I couldn't hear which ones?
I can't hear.
Go ahead. If I can ask everybody to please minimize their conversation so we can hear the proceedings...
On behalf of Mr. Parks, I was calling 44 and 45 special.
So he wants 40, 41, 44, and 45?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Call this special for Mr. Parks. I'll call 46 special. Okay, any other specials? Yep, we've got that.
And, Mr. President, just for clarification, can clerk go through the specials? It's item 27, 33, 37, 38, 40, 41, 44, 45, and 46.
I believe we have 34 as well. Yeah, 34, we have a card, too. Okay, if we can take up the balance, please open the roll. Oh, sorry, which one?
Item 29.
They call 29 special for Mr. Cardinals?
No, I'd like to put it over for 30 days.
Okay.
And that new date would be November 7th.
Okay, without objection, we'll put that over until then. We'll continue it. And if we can take up the balance, please, open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, next items?
Next item is the closed session, item number 48. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk for closed session.
And there is a special meeting?
Yeah, can we call the roll for the special meeting, please?
Alakorn Cardiniss, Grolhahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine Garcetti, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business, please.
And this is a one-item meeting. It's a TCT report regarding a Lawa agreement.
Okay, anybody wishing to call this special? If not, we have the public hearing already. We will go ahead then and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. If we can go back...
Fourth with on 49. And also on 36, fourth with, please.
And on 36. Okay, without objection, we'll send those forthwith. And if we can return to the regular meeting, and I believe number 17, Mr. Labange said, Mr. Weezer wanted reconsidered?
Hold.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we hold, because we can do it any time in the meeting. No hurry. We have one commissioner that is before us. Per custom, we'll take the commissioner up, and then we'll come back for public comment. Like to ask Joyce Foster to come forward to the chamber. If you, I mean, to the table, come forward to the table. Very good morning. Have a seat, and I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Planning Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes, to introduce our commissioner nominee.
First, I wanted to thank you for joining us today and for all your hard work, and please to share some thoughts with us as to your position in this particular committee.
Thank you, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Like to give us some... But he said, and some thoughts on your position.
Yes.
You wanted me to talk about my, the position I'm going into?
Yes.
Since I've been there for the past three to four years.
Your experience, what you see in the future, and the challenges.
I think the area planning commissions are very important part of our city, our city government. I've enjoyed the past several years I've been on the West Side Area Planning Commission. I hope our council offices continue to support them, pay attention to them, and give us input as to their feelings about planning in our areas. I look forward to following this city through a lot more, hopefully, growth and sensible growth, planned growth, and I know that affordable housing is a very important issue in this city. I feel very strongly that we need more affordable housing, but I'm also very concerned about taking down affordable housing, replacing it with mostly market rate and a few affordable housing, so that's something that we see on the West Side a lot. I look forward to working with our commission in the future. It's a very exciting commission.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, and I think this wasn't for you. I think it was for the folks that are around us, who don't seem to understand we have a speaker at the center of the table that we're trying to listen to, so I appreciate your cooperation. I also know that there's been some concern about the presence of the city attorney in the area planning commission. Can you speak to your perspective as to the role of the city attorney in your committee, or its significance, if it has any, from your point of view?
I do feel we have many cases that come before the West Side area planning where we do have real legal challenges, and I think it's important, we have used the city attorney, certainly not all of our cases, but many of our cases are very controversial, and we do rely on the city attorney. I think it helps keep the city out of some hot water later, and we can certainly vote the way we see it fit, but sometimes our impulses aren't always right on with the way the city attorney sees it. So it's helpful to have the city attorney there to give us some guidance. Not that we have to obey what the city attorney says, but it's helpful to have her there. And every commission I've, well, when I was on building and safety for over eight years, we had the city attorney there, and it was, it was quite helpful.
And just last question, my last few seconds. You did mention that you would support affordable housing.
Very much.
Unfortunately, the policy here in the city, we negotiated to a 10% of any new development, when it's up to 10% affordable, but if it was up to 20% affordable of any new development, is that, is that something that you think you would support, and you think the folks that you represent in your area would support, up to 20%?
I don't have a problem as much with the percentage, as much as I do with the way that they, that they attain it. I think taking down, we have affordable housing in the West Side, believe it or not, and it's some of the most prime property for developers to tear down under the auspices of affordable housing, and I wouldn't favor even putting 20% if everything they've torn down is basically affordable. So I think that we need to do something to encourage maintaining what we have, and then if we want to go on, and if there's an area where you can build, you can convert something, yes, I don't have a problem with the, with the percentage. It's how they, how they get it.
I wish I would have heard your voice three years ago. We were negotiating this policy, but thank you so much...
Okay.
For your hard work, and I appreciate what you've been doing for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have three other members who would like to ask some questions, starting with Mr. Rosendale, then Mr. Weiss, and then Mr. Labange. Mr. Rosendale?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
There's a good story about you that people need to know. When you were taken off the commission, which you were, there was an outcry from the community. People I respect, people that I admire in my district, the 11th district. They were in Brentwood, they were in West LA, they were in Mar Vista, they were in Venice, they were in Delray and Palms, they were in Westchester. My phone was ringing off the hook. These are from community activists, people who care about character and scale of community, people who care... people who care about affordable housing, people who are fed up with developers manipulating and controlling the process through SB 1818, which is an assault on the 11th District. By right, which is one of the curse words, as far as I know, in my three years in government, by right, by right, councilman, by right, by right. Well, these zoning decisions are made in the past. Committee groups are formed, and people die and move on, and people have no idea that their R1 house might be next to an R3 lot until they see a mushroom, like I have this Louise project that's totally an obscene assault in Delray. But what you have done on that commission in three years is always put the feet to the fire. The feet to the fire of the developer, the feet to the fire of the law, our city attorney's office, which is less of a friend to me than I don't know how it is with my colleagues. So I just want to start off by saying, bless you for being who you are, and thank you for willing to come back in. I had a conversation with the mayor about it, you know? And, you know, we learned from our constituents that you're a fighter for the people. So hats off to you, right off the gate. Here are my questions for you. How can we, at least in the 11th District, take 1818 and put some conditions on it that stop them from always saying by right? You've been through this, give me some thoughts on that.
Well, 1818 is fairly new, as far as our commission is concerned. We definitely have to put some conditions, we have to change that it isn't overall every property in our district, certainly the 5th and the 11th District, should not be by right. It has to go through a review. And I would welcome, that's where I think our commission needs the council support and needs the input from the council office, which we do get, and we appreciate that. Because there isn't much as a commission, and we can make rulings if they are deemed to be illegal later. I mean, I'd rather make the ruling and let it be challenged. I like the city council to have to hear these people come before you, and I want you to see what we see. Because we see the retired senior citizens who are being misplaced, we see the young students who, this is their last resort, people that have lived in their apartments for 20, 30 years. I want them to come before you, and maybe the council can take it seriously and do something. Because as far as a commission, we are limited. But we can extend a little bit beyond what we're supposed to do and try to, to get some actual changes made. That's what we hope to.
And the by right of, say, let's just talk about condo conversions quickly. How do we put a stop on that? I tried to do a moratorium on it, I couldn't get it moving at all. Now we have an economic recession, we're in a serious economic thing, so I don't know if it's as big a deal today as it was yesterday, but it still is in the 11th District. I still see my constituents, middle-class and working-class people, being displaced by the notion of a condo conversion. What can I do to assist my constituents in stopping that from happening?
One of the things I think that we have to do is, I think our city has to get serious about giving some incentives to apartment owners that have owned their apartment to keep their apartment, whether it's tax incentives or whatever. Because right now, these people that maybe have owned their apartments for 20 years, they get, a developer comes in and offers them more than they've ever could think of, and they want to sell. We do have a tenants' right, that I know that we have some people active in our community that are trying to push for a tenants' right bill. So certainly that we can give the tenants a sizable amount of money, make sure that they have the ability to relocate, especially if they've been there for any length of time or if their senior citizens are handicapped. There are a lot of things, I know we have an attorney that has been working very closely with the tenants, Noel Weiss, who has tried very hard to get his tenants' right package together. But I think that we need to address what's happening, why so many of these are being sold. And I think that giving apartment owners some kind of incentive, tax break or whatever, to encourage them to keep their buildings, rather than just sell them off to developers.
I think that's a great idea, and I would love to see if you could help us initiate some
I'd be happy to.
legislation that we could do. Because I hear that every day, and I would love to be able to keep our tenants in those structures. And also, I thank Mr. Wesson for upping the relocation package, which became dramatically increased, which makes people think twice about throwing a person out and living within those rules. But we also have other folks who, and I don't know if you can help me or not. I can tell you one complex where they want to kick everybody out. So what do they do every month, they keep raising the rent, like obscene, to force them out so they don't have to give them relocation money. Is there anything we can do about a situation like that? Then you'll have an empty building, then he doesn't have the issue. I know it's come before us.
Well, I think giving a landlord a tax incentive or, and I don't really know how it would work, because I have never heard it mentioned before.
Yeah.
But something to that, along those lines, might be beneficial. This is something that's not under rent control, then.
Right.
Oh, it's very difficult, other than giving an incentive for the owner to keep the tenants there. And I don't know what that would be.
Last thing I want to ask you, because I don't want to hog the moment here too much more, is the community plans. West LA is now doing its community plan. Would you explain how important that is when we look at zoning, and we look at character and scale, and we look at transit corridors and all of that?
Well, the community plan's critical. A community plan hasn't been redone in quite some time. The entire complexity of the West Side has changed greatly since we, our last community plan. We have an enormous need, I believe, to keep industrial, light industrial areas from developing into major condo developments. We need to keep the balance in our community. I think green technology is coming in to more and more as an industrial, it's something that we'll see in our industrial areas. And we need, once you lose industrial area, you never get it back. Once you build a condo there or an apartment, you never get it back.
Right.
So I would hope that our community plans will pay a lot of attention to the mix, the balance. We need to develop near transit lines. However, the West Side doesn't have a lot of transit lines. And we need to, that has to be a priority within our city to get transit lines, to get transit in the West Side, all over this city, but certainly in the West Side.
Well, in concluding, I'm delighted that you're back. I want to thank Mr. Weiss, who came right to you and said, you got to have her back on, you know, in the 5th District. He felt the same energy, and he was real positive. I want to thank the mayor for showing that kind of leadership to bring you back into the play. And of course, of course, I want to thank your husband, right there. Why don't you just stand up, Bob, and let's give him a round of applause, who's the backup here, dynamic duo. And lastly, I want to thank the community, who came strongly and pointed out to electives like me that you were an invaluable treasure to that commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Rosendale. I really believe, Mr. Rosendale, that Ms. Foster is literally the best-serving city commissioner in this city. And I'm very grateful to Mayor Villarrealosa for understanding that and for seeing fit to appoint you to another term. I don't know why you want to do this for another term, because it is aggravation central down there.
Easier than running for city council.
Well, that's, you've got another month to throw your hat in the ring. But, no, in all seriousness, I said it in plumb, and I just want to say it again here, that I really, personally, really appreciate your service. And I wish every planning commissioner at every level in the city could learn how to be a planning commissioner from you, and learn how you weigh the evidence in all the cases, you understand the different levels of review that are supposed to be applied, and you, as far as I can tell, you've always come out with a decision that is as good as it can be for all parties, but is ultimately the right decision for the whole city. Because the whole city needs to go forward, and a lot of times, we can't do planning decisions by acclimation. And people who seek applause for every planned decision are oftentimes not looking towards the future of this city. You truly are, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. Joyce Foster has a great heart, has a great mind, and has a great commitment to her community, her neighborhood. I've known her for over a decade, I met her last century. How's that, huh? Isn't that something? In the rear administration, she was a great commissioner then, she'll be another great commissioner, and I thank everyone who's been involved with supporting Joyce. And I think the aspect is the combination of traffic and housing, and how you do it, have a good voice. Having someone from the neighborhood who cares is going to make a difference. So I just stand tall to support Joyce Foster for this position. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, and thank you, Ms. Foster, for your great service and putting yourself forward again. With that, we know it's a lot of time that you spend, and we appreciate it, and I know the people of Los Angeles do as well. So let's go ahead and open the roll on the nomination. I believe we had the hearing already in committee. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
And you are reappointed, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we can go to public comment. Our first speaker is Michael Carrion. After that, we'll go to Rick Nightingale in Venice. Good morning.
It is now 10:41, and Councilman Wezar is not here yet. He is not exempt from today's meeting, but he is not here yet. So that goes to show you the kind of representation we're getting in the 14th District. Mr. Wezar, can staff here or city council address Mr. Wezar and let him know that he works for the 14th District and not only Boyle Heights? Mr. Wezar seems to think that the only thing he has is Boyle Heights on his agenda. So I come here to city council, hopefully to see him, but apparently, he can't even show up to work. So I asked, is he exempt from today? My answer was, no, he wasn't exempt from today. He did not ask to be exempt from today. Yet he's not here. There were two staff members here when we started this morning at 10 o'clock. That was Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Smith, thank you very much for being prompt. People drive a long way to get here on time, yet city councilmen cannot show up on time. If this were a public entity, you guys would be fine. Some people have excuses, some people make it a habit. And that's unfair to the public here, when you're here to do a job and you can't even show up on time. It's a shame, shame on you. This is where you guys come to represent us, and when you get here, there's somebody speaking, and you're all having little conversations here. Ms. Perry couldn't even speak to the president because people were having a conversation behind her. That is rude. You come on public TV, but they can't see what's going on. So I come up here to address it so the public can know. A lot of the council members here are chattering, chattering, chattering all day behind everybody, and nobody can get anything done. But when it's their turn to speak, boy, do they get upset. They demand to be heard.
Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale out in the San Fernando Valley. After that, we'll come back for Zuma Dog.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I'm still on this project regarding all this money going towards low income and the housing thing we just heard. That it's 10% now, and now council people are pushing for 20%. Where do you people think that you're going to get all this money? I just don't understand that the middle class is just not in your vocabulary, period. That if it don't have to do with the needy and so forth, there is nothing that you could care less. I mean, the people need better roads. We turn around, and then if you want more people, you're going to need more police officers. Right now, you can't afford what you got. And how is it going to happen if you want 20,000 more people in the next five years? What's going to happen to, we go down the streets, and the trees are coming onto the streets and that stuff, they're not being trimmed. The sidewalks are atrocious. People walk, and they're broken, they're chipped, and then you people want the homeowners to turn around and pay half if you want it done right away, or wait your turn. It's just unbelievable that the people pay their taxes to get just the average things taken care of, and it don't get done. It's flat, don't get done. But you have all these other projects that you want taken care of. And I'm telling you, it can't happen. And I'm, and it don't, every, I'm here, and I hear these committees, and it's still, everything's the needy, the needy, the needy. I'm sorry, but they can sure all carry cell phones. Everybody has a cellphone, and they can sure pay their bill on their cell phones. And I'd like to know what you are going to do, I'm sorry, for the middle class. Because we're getting screwed. That's all there is to it. You can care less about us. And for these apartments and so forth and so on, you're not even maintaining the situation with them. If they call up, you don't do nothing about it, for all the people that are living in them. Thank you.
Our next speaker before that is going to be Mr. Labange to introduce a class that's here, and then Zuma Dog.
Two great teachers from Eagle Rock Elementary. I'm honored to, on behalf of Councilmember Wezar, who is in the district attending the matters, and will be here shortly. But Ms. Calberhal and Ms. Cabrera lead these great 3rd graders and 6th graders from Eagle Rock Elementary School. Give them a big hand. I don't know, each and every one of us are very proud of you. And get a nice shot on TV, come up close there, Channel 35. And your councilman has done a great job in the school district as well as in the city. We thank him, Councilmember Wezar. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. Zuma Dog is our next speaker for general public comment.
Yes, and Councilmember Labange stole my thunder, because I was going to say, in all my time here, I've never seen a class that is so good and paying attention, I really have, they really are paying attention. It's so nice to see from Eagle Rock. Thank you, Councilmember Wezar. Okay, so my name is Zuma Dog, and you can see my videos of further coverage at zumatube.com. And I'm here to, first of all, you got to admit, last October, in the last November, '07, I said the stock market would be in the 10,000 range in October, and like this super bullet train, we don't have right on time. And I warned you about all this crisis that the city wouldn't have money, and all of this. Okay, so please pay attention. Because also, I was screaming for a long time recently about all your high-density projects, that there's not going to be enough water. You've heard me say it, you've heard me have nervous breakdowns, screaming like a mental patient, not enough water. I actually spoke with Governor Arnold Schwarzenegger personally about this matter last week. And I'm glad to say, I want the people of Los Angeles to know, yesterday, the city did start to have a discussion, item 16, about the water crisis. So please pay attention very much, and now here's the next thing. This is very important, and it's about to be the least favorite conversation I have ever had before council, regarding affordable housing. You've heard this Prop B. First of all, no on B. Secondly, why do they have to change the law? Because they have been violating the law. Regarding affordable housing, it's been limited, there's certain affordable housing that's been limited to two-story buildings to prevent density for the elderly, and the city council has been approving these affordable housing units above two stories. You know what I'm talking about. If there are 16 people that know what I'm talking about, it's Zuma Dog and city council, and they are nervous as hell right now, because they have, the reason this B has to pass is because they've been violating the law openly and vagrantly, and they were busted. And it doesn't matter if this passes, you have already violated the law. Zuma Dog will hopefully be suing you on this.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs. After that will be Ogah Hall.
Good morning, city council. No rules in government meeting today. No chance for clarification regarding speaking to items not agendized. For example, the contract between the city and AEG for advertising at the convention center. Never on agenda, never, no violation of the Brown Act. No chance for clarification regarding amendments to agenda items not being made available to the public prior to meetings. A chance to comment on the item for the public. No chance for clarification on items mistakenly categorized on agenda that should, according to the Brown Act, be corrected. But we do have special council meetings and rules of decorum for the public. Related company, related cause, the developer of the Grand Avenue project has been given leeway, meeting required thresholds for the development of the Grand Avenue project. Last week, it was reported, Related Cause purchased another property in downtown LA for $700 million. Do they have thresholds to meet on that? Also, what is the agenda for the city council regarding meeting thresholds for the related companies in the Grand Avenue project? Settlement with the outdoor advertisers regarding the billboards by the city attorney. There was some discussion in the newspaper, or some reports in the newspaper that council members weren't aware of exactly what the settlement was. Aren't these settlements discussed in closed session by the city council? No on Parks. He may not be bought, but he'll sell out the city. Oh, and by the way, Lum No on Parks. He may not be bought, but he'll sell out the city. Oh, and by the way, Lumina does celebrate Patriots' Day also, Councilman Parks, not only Boston. No on the half-cent sales tax. No completion dates for projects. No projects. Remember State Initiative 1H, funding for the Expo Line, I mean, the Mid-City Expo Line, must be a subsidy.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Olga Hall. After that is Noel Weiss. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the council. Today, I come with a request. In the past few weeks, members of the Southwest Museum Coalition and I have attended some meetings with a few of the council members, deputies, to explain the issue of the Southwest Museum. They have heard our story very attentively and with understanding. One question always surfaced. What is your council member? What is the mayor? What they're doing about it? Nothing. The mayor and Councilman Weesar are doing nothing. Everywhere we hear, we hear the same words. What is your councilman doing? Your council member is the one that has to take the lead. We cannot do anything. The museum is in his district. But I say, all of you can do something to save the Southwest Museum, the first museum in Los Angeles as a world-class museum, and designate Griffith Park as a historical cultural monument. Both are iconic treasures in the city of Los Angeles. They belong to all the city of Los Angeles. You cannot allow this division of districts to prevent you from saving them. They do not just belong to the northeast area of Griffith Park Districts. Their purpose and history go beyond these lines of separation. I know Councilman Ed Reyes wants to save the Southwest Museum, but the museum is not in his district, so his hands are tied. He has a connection to the museum that comes from his heart, but he cannot do it alone. He needs the rest of you to support him. Alone, in your political climate, would mean suicide for his career. But if you want, if you stand together for the common good of this city, it can be accomplished. It is time for City Council to start working with both issues. They are tied together. The fate of one will affect the other. Greed is what has brought this country to the abyss that we are facing, and the greed of a woman is what has brought us here. She does not care if she necessarily destroys the Southwest Museum.
Thank you, Ms. Hall.
As long as she can satisfy her greed.
Thank you. Noel Weiss is our next speaker.
Councilmembers, good morning. I've got a concern here. We've got the overall question about the ability of government to meet the needs of the people. There is a crisis in government. There's an inability of the government at state, local, and now city level. And my primary concern was the Treasurers Report. Mr. Parks, on his budget and finance committee yesterday, he had an item agenda about the Treasurers Report. We have a problem in this city. Mr. Parks, nor did Mr. Gruel, nor did Mr. Rosendahl was on that committee. I don't know if Mr. Smith was there because I heard it on the audio. But the bottom line is, what is the state of our investments right now? We have 6% or almost 7% of the money in these mortgage-backed securities. There's $250 million with, or $50 million with AIG, now basically bankrupt, $350 million with Deutsche Bank, basically the lender that's partnered with Aimco to screw the tenants. The commercial paper is down $300 million. What's going on? No report, no nothing. Secondly, with regard, again, Lincoln Place, Mr. Rosendahl isn't here, but he needs to know. We have to have the Ellis Act declarations returned by the Housing Department because it will resolve the case. Mr. Rosendahl asks a lot of questions. You know what? If Mr. Rosendahl wants the answers to his questions, he basically knows where to go. Unfortunately, I have not heard from him, and the problem is, the citizens in his district are being harmed because of it. Now, again, I asked Mr. Rosendahl to ask the Housing Department to return those Ellis Act declarations. The case will solve. If the Housing Department doesn't do it, then the City Council must do it. Finally, with regard to the SB 1818, right now...
God bless you. I'm here, as you know, right behind you.
Hold my time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. I look forward to talking with you about it. Finally, so we can basically get something done and solve that problem. He made a campaign promise, and so far, it's not being fulfilled because the people are still suffering 38 acres, vacant apartments in the midst of a housing crisis, not acceptable when a resolution is clear. Thank you.
Our last speaker, I'm sorry, I can't quite read the handwriting. Is it Gracie? Or Gracia? And I can't read this last name. Is there somebody else who filled out a public speaker card?
Taylor.
Oh, come on up. Why don't you come up for your public comment right now, ma'am, and we'll make sure we get your name correctly on the record. My apologies. It's probably my bad eyesight, but will you just state your name for the record, ma'am? Make sure we get it right.
My name is Gracie Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R.
Thank you very much.
It was gray, but I deleted the gray.
Got it. Please, go ahead.
Good morning, City Councilwomen. Is that Jenny Hahn over there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm glad that you're here. I'm here, Ms. Hahn, and City Councilwomen and City Councilmen, because of theft identity, which has became a major thing. I am a black woman, 75 years of age. As you can see, I'm black. But I'm 75 years of age. I'm living with my son, Felipe Bocaj, out of town. I went to live with him. He came here and got me after I was operated on, after I was in a bus accident. I've had all of my ID that was stolen from the Panama. Somehow or another, the city is involved in certain things where my license has became missing, birth certificates has become missing. I have a son that I have left here because he's in a program which is dyslexic. I went to visit with my granddaughters, which was in Anaheim's district. We're for Bocaj's children's mother. He needs to be with you for Drew Hospital. As I said, my ID was taken, and I'm having some problems. And I wanted to bring it, you know, this matter before you all, and also all over the world, that I'm not living with a spouse. I'm from Jamaica. I never lived with him in my life, with him on my lease anywhere. And my children and I have been going through an awful lot. On my way here, my phone came up missing. That has been an issue. And also, my ID is being used. And I would like for you all to look into it since it's on your district. Where's Jan Perry? Oh, Jan, what happened to Wee Shu Overcome? I was up there on Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
I was on Martin Luther King Boulevard. Everybody...
Thank you very much, ma'am. That will close our general public comment. If we could take up the items called special. Mr. Parks, I believe, has asked for, was it 44 and 45 to be taken out of order, Mr. Parks?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that on 44 and 45, are two serious crimes that have occurred within days of each other at or near the USC campus, and we're asking for a $50,000 reward on both of them. First one's on Friday, September the 5th. A 19-year-old USC student was walking in the 3,000 block of McClintock Avenue, just north of the USC campus. When a suspect approached from behind, the suspect grabbed the victim and proceeded to sexually assault her. Suspect then fled on foot in an unknown direction. LAPD has asked for this reward and believes it will help them in solving this case. Also, on Saturday, September the 6th, a 19-year-old USC student was attending a fundraiser at the Latin Business Student Association in the area 23rd and Hoover in the city. After the event, the victim elected to walk home from that location to the north of the university campus. The victim, while walking on Hoover, the LAPD report says she was approached by three male Hispanics who befriended her and basically, under the guise of providing her an escort home, walked her to her residence, whereupon, reaching the residence, one of the suspects assaulted her. The suspect left in a unknown direction. We'd ask for anyone that has information on either one of these cases to contact Southwest Detectives, Detective Aloa Ochoa at 213-485-2585, and there's a $50,000 reward on each one of these cases.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item, Madam President. Items 6 and 7 were being held for 12 members, and there are 14 now, and there are no cards on the items.
There are no cards on that item? There appear to be no questions or comments from members, so Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item... Do you want to do this together?
Yes, together, fine.
Six and seven. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Item number 10, called special by Councilmember Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number 10.
Thank you. And if I could just have some representatives from the Port of L.A. to come up here. Colleagues, this item is just about a proposed tariff that will be designed to address some issues we've had in the Wilmington Marina. And the Wilmington Marina has really been a huge part of the history of the Port of Los Angeles, and it's a place where a lot of people have come to have their boats. There are, you know, some live boards there. There's a whole community there. But in the past, there certainly have been derelict boat owners. It's become a place where there's crime, there's neglect, there's blight. And this proposed tariff will enable the port to take direct action in cases where a boat owner is not keeping their vessel in good condition. It will allow the port to intervene to ensure that a vessel is repaired and take necessary control of the vessel itself. It will increase safe operations by requiring recreational boat owners berthing vessels in the ports, marinas, and yacht clubs to be in compliance in certain areas. And overall, it's a good thing. And I have spoken to some of the Marina, the boat owners in the Wilmington Marina, and they actually think this is a good program. They're also, the responsible boat owners, I have been concerned about the derelict boat owners and the crime and the blights there. It's a good thing. In committee, when it came before me, one of the concerns was outreach to the boat owners, to those who are there in the Wilmington Marinas. There was also a concern about, one of the provisions of this will require inspectors to come onboard and inspect for certain things. There was a little anxiety from the community not quite understanding what these inspectors were actually going to be looking for, what did those inspections look like, what was the procedure. So one of the things I asked for was to meet with some of the boat owners in that Marina and explain to them about the inspection process. Has that been done?
Yes. This is Councilwoman Hahn and Councilmembers...
Why don't you move your microphone up close.
Michael Christensen, Deputy Executive Director at the Port, and also introducing Diane Vaskovic, our Chief Warfarnger. Yes, Councilwoman, we heard your concern, and we have made an outreach to the Wilmington Boat Owners Association, particularly the head of that group, Donna Ethington. And Diane has had a number of conversations with her. I think we brought her to the point where she's quite comfortable. In fact, she has volunteered herself to kind of be the first one that would undergo one of these surveys, so that she could show the other members of the Boat Owners Association how, what will be done.
Good.
And if there are any particular issues, we can resolve them right then on the spot.
Good. Did you have anything to add to that? You might want to pull your microphone up.
I have had conversations with Donna, and she had notified us that she'd like to be involved from the very beginning when we were doing this. So we told her, no problem, Donna, we will work with you. In fact, I had a conversation with her this week. We are putting together the live board checklist, and we're going to go over it with her, along with the marine surveyor. One of her concerns was she didn't want the marine surveyor to just show up unannounced at the boats. And I said, that's not going to happen. We're going to set up a procedure. We'll have you involved. After we get the checklist going, we said that we would also reach out to all the other live boards out there and tell them what to expect.
Good. Well, I certainly appreciate that. These are certainly my constituents. I represent them, and I appreciate your willingness to work with them. I commend Donna for being the guinea pig, to be the first one to undergo one of these inspections. And I will encourage my colleagues to vote in favor of this new tariff. And I always just like to go on the record saying, the Wilmington Marinas are, you know, really such a big part of the history of Wilmington. Generations of family-owned marinas are there. We don't want to put up with blight, or derelict boat owners, or living conditions there that are not livable. I believe in that. But I also want to say that it really does serve a purpose for, you know, sort of the, you know, the middle-class boat owners. A lot of these people would never be able to afford to keep their boat at the L.A. Yacht Club, or, you know, Marina Del Rey Yacht Club. This is for them. And they deserve to have a place where they can keep their boats. They deserve to have as much access to recreational boating as anybody does. But we want to get the conditions of that Marina upgraded. We know there's going to be some work done there, and we just, I just want to speak on their behalf to say that they appreciate this, but just make sure that they're not too inconvenienced when we're doing upgrades and repairs over there. So, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay, well, colleagues, I urge your support of this new tariff for the Port of Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. No other speakers in the queue. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item, Madam President. Item number 18 was being held on the desk for the committee report, and that has been distributed to the council members.
All right. Any comments or questions on item 18, then? Then open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item.
Next item is item number 27, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, before we go to item 27, Mr. Weesar stood up. Mr. Weesar, would you...
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to reconsider item number 17 and continue that item for 30 days, if possible.
All right, that'll be without objection. A continuance on item 17. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on that? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Now, back to 27?
Yes, Madam President.
All right, we do have one card on item 27. And if you would come up now, Mr. Sacks, you are our speaker.
Yes, good morning, Arnold Sacks. This is a headline from Saturday's L.A. Times from October 4th. "L.A. Expect Big Budget Shortfall. $400 Million Gap This Year Urges Managers to Plan for Job and Service Cuts." DWP: Fat raises seem like a joke, but they're for real. This is regarding the trash fees. Residential trash collection was boosted from $11 a month to $26 a month. The new fees generated $137 million, but the city hired only 400 more cops, according to a recent report from City Controller Laura Chik, and they cost about $42 million. So where did almost $100 million go? Chik's report revealed that most of that went to higher salaries for those already on the L.A.'s police payroll, covering the nearly 10% raise that the city granted to police unions. But that only takes into account the fee raised to $26. But the fees now are $39. So that's even more than $137 million. Where did that funding go? We have budget problems. And the problems are, not that it's enough money, but where is the money being spent? How is the money being spent? We need a little help. We need a little replacement here. We need a little bit of ethics, and it's certainly not going to come from anybody sitting at this horseshoe. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on this item? Close the roll. Oh, is there... I'm sorry. Before we vote, oh, Mr. Zuma Dog has a card on the item two that just came in. Please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Sorry for the slight delay. I'll just be a couple minutes here. But this is about the ordinance here for Department of Personnel, and I'm just here to issue a warning that I do not think the city will be having the money to pay the personnel that will be under this ordinance here. And I also see it's Department of... Oh, this is a couple tied together here. Yes, let me just be brief then, to issue a warning that due to the financial circumstances... Yes, let me just be brief then, to issue a warning that due to the financial circumstances that I have warned council about over the past year, about spending problems, that all have been ignored, and the wastefulness, we are now in a situation that we have before us, an ordinance regarding the employment of personnel for 2008, 2009 Department of Aging. And I'm here to say you are not going to have enough money to pay all these people. And I'm also here to say that you need to do more for the elderly and the aging regarding shelters, because a lot of these people will be kicked out onto the streets, because they're... the city has a lot of plans for gentrification, and as we know, they violate all types of ordinances and planning, and as we know, that affordable housing that is supposed to be dedicated strictly for the elderly... the housing, again, I have a lot of noise here, but I'm here to say that you're going to have a big problem with the elderly, because a lot of the affordable housing earmarked for elderly, the city has been violating the policy and giving it to multifamily people, and so there's going to be a big wave of homeless, of elderly, because you haven't built the housing you're supposed to...
Madam President, this is... has nothing to do with the housing element, it has to do with the departmental personnel ordinances that were approved in the budget.
And it says Department of Aging, which is elderly. Okay, so I'll move back on the topic, and I'm just here to say, "Due to ignoring all global economic trends as warned by Zuma Dogg and as ignored by Antonio, you spent yourself into so much debt that these people aren't going to get paid. I hope you pull it out of your pocket."
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. That will close our public comment on this item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 33, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, Arnold Sacks is our speaker on number 33. And if we can take up that together with 34, Mr. Sacks will make it convenient for you, and you can speak on both of those items. And if we can send 27 forthwith, without objection.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sacks. I certainly would agree with the council's actions against the state for wanting to sell billboard space on the freeways, because based on the council's action in billboard space, nobody screws the public like this city council. Just look what happened at the convention center.
Sir, I think that's a later item, we're on 33 and 34 right now. Those are the items on the North Balboa Boulevard and the Community Outreach and Education on Spay and Neuter Ordinance.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. I think we have wrong cards here.
Okay, let me... I'll take a look at those for you.
I was... I put a card in on the state's initiative for billboards.
We have 33 and 34 for you. We may have that also, that's a later one, on 37.
Oh, 33. I'm sorry, sir, I didn't put a card in on 33.
Okay. Do you want to speak on 34?
34 is regarding the...
Spay and neuter?
Spay and neuter? Yes, sir, I'd like to speak on that.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd actually like to speak on the fact that the auditor did a report, and the city council is acting on an audit report. This is an article from the Daily Breeze dated September 24th, '08, in which the controller rips port operations again. After three audits, the controller is ripping the port of L.A. for its operations regarding contracts. Here, the auditor rips the animal control department, and the city council is jumping in with both feet. Three audits later, and the city council is... can't find their shoes. Why? Well, because the animal control department, they can jump on, because they don't have the personnel in the first place. But the Department of Harbors can't do anything there, too much money involved, too much money passing between hands. So it's just a report for receive and file. Who's getting hurt? Well, other than the pets that are getting spayed, neutered, the public. They're also getting spayed, neutered, too. Thanks for your time, your answers, and your attention.
I'll close our general... our comments for that item. If we can please recognize Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President, this... the new spay and neuter law for dogs and cats took effect a week ago today, and this item was introduced requesting that it go to audits and governmental efficiency. It only went to public safety, so I would ask that if we could forward this item to audits and governmental efficiency?
Okay, there's no objection. We will send that back on 34. Let's go ahead and take a vote on 33. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, we'll send 34 to audits committee. Okay, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 37, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, we have cards on item 37. We'll go to the public first, and then call that special, and Mr. LeBonds as well. Will Wright is our first speaker, after that is Dennis Hathaway. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Will Wright, I work with the American Institute of Architects, the Los Angeles chapter, and I would like to commend you on your leadership and register our support for this resolution. I think it's very important, and I would like to also note that we are recommending on October 16th to the Planning Commission, an ICO, on any new digital conversions for billboards. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. Dennis Hathaway is our next speaker, after that is David Ewing. Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Dennis Hathaway, I'm president of the Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. We support this resolution. We realize that the state needs revenue, it's obvious. But there are times when the health and safety of the citizens transcends this need, and this is one of those times. And I want to commend Councilman Garcetti for bringing this resolution forward, and I would like to urge him to take this resolution and send it on to his counterparts in other cities, in San Diego, San Francisco, Oakland, because that kind of leadership would go a long way towards giving a message to the governor and the state legislature that the citizens of this state do not want their safety compromised in this way. Thank you.
You're not David Ewing.
No, I'm not. You're in the queue.
David Ewing? Last call, David Ewing?
Councilmembers, good morning. I think it's very nice that Mr. Garcetti is doing this, but I think this issue, again, of billboard blight, what we're talking about is, again, the council enacting a policy. We don't have a housing policy, we don't have a transportation policy, a billboard policy. It would be more credible if Mr. Garcetti or the council basically said, "You know what? We're going to incorporate in our zoning the value of visual blight." This is a... is it a value or is it not? Debate it, do it. Same thing... well, so my concern is that this motion and this protocol be the same old pander to the people, where we basically say to the people, "Okay, I'm really concerned about it, so what are we going to do? We're going to study it. And we're going to take a position on something that we have no control over, like some state legislation, rather than do it here locally." I think at this point in time, my suggestion to Mr. Garcetti, my suggestion to the council, number one, relative to whatever settlement was reached, you know what? The council needs to waive attorney-client privilege. Whatever was said, way back when, let it become public, so we know what the city attorney said to the council at that particular point in time. Secondly, as far as getting the documentation on the settlement, let's do that, so that the public is aware. This idea of standard practice, standard operating procedure, the council continuing to basically work things under the radar, not disclose to the public what's basically going on, I think is wrong. Now, it's a very nice thing in terms of trying to control this billboard blight, and again, I respect in terms of what Mr. Garcetti is doing, but the pander and the patronizing, respectfully, ladies and gentlemen, has to stop at some point in time. And hopefully, we'll begin to see something, you know, affirmative along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Ewing, I understand you're here. Mr. Ewing?
Good morning, council. I'm David Ewing, I live in Venice, and I just want to... I just want to add my voice to those saying, "Thank you for voting against these freeway signs appended to the amber alerts." I... we... we know we all need money, we know the state's in financial trouble, we know the city's in financial trouble, and we know now we're all in financial trouble. But we do have to exercise some judgment on how we raise the money to solve our problems, and it doesn't seem to me that selling off our quality of life piece by piece is a sensible way to do it, particularly on the freeways where it involves grave safety issues. And so I just wanted to add my voice to those saying, "Thank you for taking this up."
Thank you, sir. Barbara Monahan Burke?
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Barbara Monahan Burke from Studio City. I... a little more, thanks. Barbara Monahan Burke, Studio City Neighborhood Council Board Member, and also co-chair of our Government Affairs Committee. We are just in the process, in our board, of taking this up, it's gone through the Government Affairs Committee. And so I have to speak carefully personally here, but it is a major issue in Studio City. I support the resolution by councilmembers Garcetti and Gruehl. The state of California is opposing the state of California's proposal to allow paid advertisements to be on display on the amber alert emergency electronic signs used on the freeways. No money is worth degrading our system in this way. We in Studio City are concerned about their impact on drivers. The advertisements will also decrease the effectiveness of the amber alerts, emergency signs, because people will just zone out and not care about what the substance is. Advertisements will be a distraction, adversely impact traffic safety, congestion will be added, light pollution, visual blight, and excessive energy, as been shown, will be used. Since the advertisements would be displayed on freeways, they would be within the minimum 660-foot space, which is actually required by the state for electronic billboards to be away from the freeways. So the state is going against its own ordinances. I thank you for your consideration, and thank the councilmembers for bringing this forward, and I look forward to strong legislation on this and other billboard issues, so that we can ban the blight that is being imposed on us at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, first of all, thank you. Someone issued me the City of Los Angeles cap, so since I'm speaking about this very important issue, what is it? Oh, the electronic freeway sign. I mean, I know Arnold Schwarzenegger is a governor, and I know he's an actor, but I didn't know he's an ad agency. Who said that the federal... that the state government is getting involved in being an ad agency and taking over these billboard signs? And plus, we know the deals that they take stink. Thank you to Councilmember Rosendahl, who put his political career at great risk by highlighting the fact that the city made a bum deal when they do decide to make a deal. And so basically, hell nah, we are not giving the keys to free enterprise over to Arnold Schwarzenegger to do... hey, that is... this is not good, this is where we have to draw the line. I know the city needs money. And I also would like to commend council, although of course they thought they were good, but they did come to their senses, I guess, for the first time ever. I'll commend Council President Eric Garcetti and Bill Rosendahl for standing up against these billboards, saying that they are bad because they're dangerous and unsafe.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg. Arnold Sacks?
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sacks. It is a good idea to ban the billboards, but where was the council's concern regarding billboards in the communities? Where was the council's concern regarding the selling out of billboard rights in the city? State property, oh, we don't agree. We think it's a bad idea. City property, we think it's a good idea, because we're getting paid by the billboard companies who help fund our reelection. State, no, we don't get paid from them. City, yes, we get paid from them. And who knows? It could be worth over $2 million. The city just sold the rights at the convention center for $2 million, a $30 million property, at least in advertising rights, over 16 billboards at the convention center. No big deal. Sinage on the freeways? Not a good idea. But what if it's worth $10 million? It's money into the budget, money the state won't take from the city. That was the arguments we got here, it's money for the city. $2 million, chump change. Who's the chumps? Well, John Q. Public, again, as always. Thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you. First speaker on the queue, Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, I want to thank the motion...
Mr. Garcetti for the motion?
Sorry, I called it special, I forgot to note that. Mr. LeBonds, I know Mr. Rosendahl feels strongly about this. Thank you to the members of the community who are here. You've actually articulated most of the points I would have made, so I won't be redundant. But this idea to take what is clearly in the middle of our right-of-way when we're driving, and to turn what is used right now for extraordinary occasions, when there's child abductions, and to essentially change out, because my understanding is you take the existing orange signs and actually change them out to be full, huge-screen, digital in the middle of the freeway, that this is a bad idea. And I will take the suggestion that was made, and I'd like to incorporate an amendment to forward this to the California League of Cities, so we can have other cities throughout the state as well join us in this, so we can speak with a single voice. Look, you know, when you open your mouth on billboards, there's always... it's very difficult to be an absolutist, one way or the other on this. It is difficult because of the court cases that have been decided here, but it is time to start giving some power back to the communities, and to look at where we have the ability to make sure that even in difficult financial times, we don't make the mistake of causing accidents, of distracting drivers right in the middle. I know there's been a lot of talk about the convention center thing. We haven't approved any billboard yet, and we've actually asked that CEQA and DOT report on that, so that we can be assured of that. There are some places, like in an L.A. Live environment, like along a Hollywood Boulevard, where it may be appropriate to drive these sorts of signs to there, to take them out of the neighborhoods. This isn't the motion before us, but you know that I introduced another motion when I had the first digital billboard come up in my district in a residential area. Yes, there are a couple businesses on Silver Lake Boulevard, but it is in the middle of a residential canyon, and there was such outrage from myself, from my office, from the residents that are there, that we immediately looked to the city attorney, as I know Mr. Weiss has been able to do, using the specific plans that he has in his districts that I don't. But I would very much be supportive of an ICO if we can do that legally, to stop the digital billboards from popping up everywhere, because it's a lot easier to stop it beforehand than to take one down afterwards. I also called in the sign companies, who have taken it from what's called a 10% brightness of the maximum, down to a 3% brightness, so it's less bright than the 7-Eleven sign that's there, reduce the hours. We need to play both offense and defense. Offense in figuring out where there are bad ideas like this, and also defense where we can make things more livable for places we're not going to be able to completely take billboards out, but can reduce the brightness. It's actually less bright now than it was with a paper billboard before, but we'll see what happens in the Silver Lake case, and maybe we can move that to a more commercial area. But this idea should be clear for all of us. The idea... and we understand the state is going through immense things. We understand what it's like to be policymakers, we have to decide which parks we're going to close down, what hours we're going to shave off from the libraries, which police are we not going to hire this year. And it's not going to get better, colleagues, before it gets worse. That said, there are better proposals and there are worse proposals, and this is a terrible one. And I hope that we can say that this is a terrible proposal, together with one voice, we can have other cities join with us, and we can take that completely off the table for the state, as we look at other ways to balance our state budget. So I ask for your support. I appreciate the great work that AIA has done, and the community activists who've been a part of this. We want to continue to partner with you in looking at how we can make this a more beautiful city. And part of that is figuring out where there may be appropriate places to put signage, and where we can take them down. But one of the things we did learn from this is, no matter what we're briefed on, the fine print is just as important. We'll take responsibility for that, I'll take responsibility for that. The fine print does have those details of looking where we actually are going to see blight pop up in our neighborhood. And blight comes in many forms. It can come in decrepit buildings, but it can also come when you have lights that are broadcast into your living room or into your bedroom, just feet away from where you live. And that's what we're focused on. We're going to look at CEQA and other remedies that we may be able to use, as well as ICOs, specific plans, to make sure that we give some power back to the communities. And one way of doing that is making sure this proposal never sees the light of day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President, for your articulation of putting it all in one kind of a package. It is...
It is confusing for all of us, to be candid, and it's almost schizophrenic in how we act. Obviously, on the freeway, people have to focus on the road. That's why I was against even the thought of putting it on the convention center. I don't need to stick it in Plum. The whole idea is to look at a billboard. That's marketing. That's what marketing is about, is looking at a billboard. I don't want to look at billboards when I'm driving. It is a safety issue. So that's why the convention center, besides being a bad deal for us, it was a good deal for the business thing, it is a safety issue. To put anything on that convention center, as you're turning from the 10 to the 110, it blasts you in the face. The whole point is they want it to blast in your face, so you can see it. Well, you don't want to look at it when you got to drive. It's the same thing with the governor wanting to take a sign on the freeway that tells you about some kid been kidnapped. You look up to see that, and that is already a distraction. I have seen cars slow down, because they're looking at that. So if you take that and you sell it to a marketing firm, and you do put signs up there for Coca-Cola or for something, people are going to look at it. That's what human nature's about. That's what billboards are about. That's the whole concept of marketing those things. So we got to look at a bigger picture, not the schizophrenia of just the governor. He's easy to attack on this. You know, we can make our fluff, we can pander, but it is affecting us directly. In my district, in the last year, at least, and we're going to send a team out, David Hathaway and a group, I'm going to check and see how many damn billboards I have in my district. I've been asking the city since I've been on the council, "How many billboards?" Nobody has a figure, nobody has an idea. "Oh, councilman, we're going to sue," or "We'll be sued." Keep your mouth shut. That's all I get, out of the city attorney's office. So I put a motion in, it's going to go before Ed's committee, and it's going to catalog what we have in the 11th district. And I'm not going to wait for the bureaucracy. We're going to send a group of volunteers out, and we're going to actually catalog, and we're going to hand that to building and safety, hand it to Plum, and say, "So we got X number of billboards." And I might tell you, folks, I stood at the corner there, Barrington, in one of my streets, and all of a sudden, I'm bombarded with like 40 different ads flowing in my brain, and I'm trying to drive, you know? So it is, A, a safety issue. Two, it is visual blight. And three, I'm tired of being marketed like crazy. We are not Times Square, when you look at L.A. Live. Maybe down, when you get on the other side of the freeway, you can have all that coloration, but not on the freeway, not on our streets. In my bedroom communities, it's like mushrooms popping up in the middle of the night. I wake up the next morning, and I'm at a corner, and all of a sudden, I see all this flashing stuff coming at me. So we don't have a handle on the billboards in our district, in our city. We don't have a policy that makes sense. Mr. Weiss has been fighting for it, Mr. Garcetti, everybody around the horseshoe's been fighting. But the truth of the matter is, our city attorney's office, that put a deal before us, that we had to go for, "You'll be sued." That's the way we do everything around here. We're going to be sued, we're going to be sued. But look, I'd rather be sued and be right than be intimidated. Now, I don't have any easy answers here, but all this is, is to point out what the governor is doing is similar to what we see happening all over the place. Digital billboards, visual blight, distractions of safety are happening all over the place. So maybe this will give us a deep breath, and we, as a council, can finally figure out what we have out there already, catalog it, and two, see what policies we can put in place that are consistent, and that just schizophrenic gamesmanship. So thank you for putting this before us and that we will make a symbolic gesture by making this position.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon, next.
Members, I wasn't intending to speak. I certainly support this motion. We obviously have to build reason into the process of billboards in the City of Los Angeles. I also think we ought to distinguish between the LCDs and the old signs, for lack of a better word, and perhaps go on two different tracks with ordinances that can be more specific about each. But I have to be very candid with you. It's sort of disingenuous to talk about billboards and then put up a whole bunch of like thousands of political signs with your name on them, all over your neighborhood. I guarantee you, the neighborhood doesn't like those more than they don't like the billboards. And so the point here is that we have to have a reasonable approach, and there's a reasonable way to do this. But on the political signs, obviously, it's a civil right, it's a, you know, a temporary situation to inform, a little different than billboards, but the point is that whatever we do, we should have a reasoned approach. So I'm happy to support this. I don't think that we should allow the state to control our visual pathways, and those are intersecting with our jurisdiction, and I think we should have a say, and even to the extent that if the governor forces this issue on us, or the state forces this issue on us, that we might have... It may be actionable in court from our perspective. So I support the motion and thank Mr. Garcetti for his reasoned approach to this.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti, if I could just, for one... I know, just one second. I just wanted to say three things on your motion. The first is, I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for jumping on this and putting the motion. Actually, usually, I would agree with you, Mr. Rosendahl, that when we take positions here on something that's somewhere else, usually it is symbolic, if that, and usually it's really not all that significant. Here, I actually think that it is significant, because the City of Los Angeles is directly impacted by the signs that Caltrans has within the city. We are a big city geographically in this state, you know, the biggest, and we're grappling with, and legislators up there are reading the stories about how we're grappling with the complexity of all of our sign issues. So I actually, I don't want passage of this measure to just be viewed by folks as this is just another one of these things that they just, you know, they're always routinely voting on things that aren't before them. I think this issue really is before us, and I'm not sure that legally, it's the end of the story, frankly, just doing this. That's point number one. Point number two is, I actually don't believe that, when you talk about this issue, that the proper analogy is to the digital billboard issue. I'm going to come to digitals in a second, but the proper analogy, I think, is to these new super graphics, which are the new proposals by, you know, just pretty fly-by-night folks who are just going around town and wrapping buildings in signs. What a super graphic is, is it's someone who has spotted an opportunity to put up signage and advertising where none already existed, where none already lawfully existed. And that's what this freeway issue is. It's the state, unfortunately, here, potentially taking advantage of an opportunity to put up advertising where none already existed. And that's why, that's the proper analogy. And that's a very big issue that we have here in L.A. We have a motion that most of you signed, that we're trying to have a collaborative process work on to deal with that. And I would say to my friends in the advocacy community who are here today, I really believe that's the number-one signage issue in the city. I'm going to talk to you in a second, and I think it's really important that you redouble your efforts on that precisely. On digitals, we have an approach. Lisa Trippolletti and I, in my office, are putting together something that will both inform all of you about what we've been doing when these have come up in our district. There are ways to deal with it under existing laws, and there might be a way to codify that further for the other districts as well, and hopefully, we'll have that prepared for all of you soon. But the bottom line on this, Mr. Garcetti, I just want to emphasize that I really don't think that this is one of these usual, the council votes on something that isn't within its jurisdiction, sort of matters. I think this is significant, and I actually think that your motion is going to sort of be the edge of the wedge in making sure this doesn't happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. LeBange.
I'd just like to ask the city attorney a couple of questions. Is the city attorney here? I want to know, and if members could help me, because I've never heard it. If there's a collision and there's a signboard, do we often get attached by the lawyers for the insurance of who's at fault? Does that make that section... Does that question... Do you understand that question, counselor?
You're talking about on city streets or on the freeway?
On city streets or next to the city streets, or whatever, adjacent to it, they're all over. My question, when I voted to approve the convention center program, I had one deep question, and I never got an answer, so I don't know if I need to make an amendment to ask that the city attorney issue a written opinion if they need help from the Attorney General of the State of California. Who is responsible when there's a collision and someone says, "Well, that changed," and said, "Whatever the sign changed, and the light flashed, and it made me not look at the road where I should have been, and I had an accident." I want to know who's responsible for that.
Well, a plaintiff could argue that, the causation that they'd have to prove.
But in your experience, and I see some of the city attorneys who are back here and the police commander, do we ever get... Does that ever enter, when there's claims of multimillion-dollar claims against the city, in your knowledge, in your history?
Well, first of all, on this item regarding the freeway signs, and the discussion has gotten a little bit tangential regarding other billboards.
Right.
But regarding your specific question, we could report back to you regarding whether there were any claims.
I'll report back, if you would, please, to all members, not just me, because they're interested, and who is liable on these signs, when they change, when there's... If there's an accident and someone says, "The accident caused me to..." You know, when a street lights out, Mr. City Attorney, sometimes we get blamed for that when there's an accident. You know all that, don't you?
Yes.
So I think all light is equal in some respects, so I just want to make sure that we do that. Also, members, I think of the late, great Lady Bird Lyndon Johnson's wife and what she did about "Keep America Beautiful," what Mr. Weiss said about a pull-down. I'm a little Hollywood guy, I'm a little graphic guy. I like neon a lot. I like the old neon on Wilshire Boulevard, above the old theaters at MacArthur Park, but there's got to be a balance, and there's no absolute control. I feel we lost whatever we should have as far as control and regulations. I don't want to be Orange County, I don't want to be Irvine, California, but certainly the people that we represent do feel strongly, I truly believe, they'd like to see some balance to this, and they don't want to see signs, signs everywhere, a sign. I said it was Jay Giles and his band, but I may be wrong, but I think it's unten... What's the word you just used, Mr. City Attorney? Untenable?
Well, I said tangential.
Tangential, okay, same word. Big word. I think it's absolutely... We're losing what the beauty is of Los Angeles. And I will tell you exactly, in 1978, and I'm over by 12 seconds, when Prop 13 passed, Caltrans stopped beautifying freeways. They are a part of the park system on the side of the freeways, and I think this will only uglifies freeways, so I support Mr. Garcetti on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I stand to support my colleague, Councilman Garcetti. A very basic premise is that municipalities should have the ability to control their own environments, that we should have a role in dictating the quality of life in our city. But I also know that this council and previous councils in the past have formed special-use districts that amplifies the ability for each council district to understand its own environment, to look at its issues, and address these needs in a very methodical fashion through a special-use district process. So I stand to support my council colleague, but I do know that there are certain areas in the city that require a certain level of creativity and understanding these impacts and how we address the issue of revenue, because it does speak to the needs of all the unique characteristics of this great city. So I do stand and support my colleague on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alarcon. Nope, okay. All right, that will close our discussion on this, and with the one friendly amendment to forward this as well to the California League of Cities for possible adoption there. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Cardenas? I'm sorry, was it for that one? My apologies. That is approved. If we can go to the next item, please.
Next item is item number 38. That was called Special for Cards, and an amending motion has been distributed on 38V.
Okay. Michael Carrion is our first speaker on number 38. Is Mr. Carrion here? Okay, Zumadog is our next speaker, and after that will be Arnold Sacks.
City of Los Angeles! That's my new jingle. Okay, first of all, special event fee waivers. I'd like to start by saying, "Q, no cost submitted. How can you approve to pick up the cost of something if you don't know how much it is?" Zumadog calls that blank check spending, so I hope you take that out of there. And also, we have something coming up, the Health and Fitness Fair. Oh, I'm sorry, the Assemblymember Kevin DeLeone Health and Fitness Fair. I thought we weren't going to do paid billboards. Can't it be City of Los Angeles Health Fair? Because you know what? I'm for health and fitness, but I'm not for Kevin DeLeone. I don't see why Assemblymembers' names have to appear on it. I mean, we all know what that's about. And I'd just like to say generally, special event fee waivers, hey, in case you hadn't heard, there's a little bit of an economic crunch going on out there in the real world, people. And Governor Schwarzenegger says he is not going to have the money to pay the checks of the state, and he's going for more bailouts, and you know all hell's about to break loose, and I'm putting it mildly, but yes, if anybody thinks that this economy is coming back anytime soon, well, you're just a stupid sucker, and I'm laughing at you, and we got real problems, people, so I'm here to say, "No more special event fees." Listen, these are all just parades and street festivals. $3,000, $3,000, $1,000, $3,200, $5,300, $6,000, $1,600, $2,000, $7,000, $4,000, $12,000. Oh, that item on the price is right, the 12... So this is all just today, people. This is the amount of money coming out of your general fund, just because they call special event fee waivers. Well, the police don't waive their time for showing up, neither does anybody, and it comes out of the general fund. This is madness. I am here to give the final warning. Stop these. Hell is going to break loose. It's going to be worse than Mad Max. It's going to be the worst thing ever. Stop the insanity.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Sacks, one minute left, I think? Oh, I think you've reached a limit. You want to give us just 15 seconds real quick on this? You've reached your limit.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm calling for a moratorium on special events on Saturdays and Sundays, because it interferes with people going to church, as was requested for the marathon, that it interfered with people going to church. We had four bishops here. We need to have a moratorium on special events.
Thank you. All right, that will close our public comment on that item. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Mr. President, next items, 40 and 41, were called special by Mr. Parks, and I believe he's no longer here.
Okay. Does anybody wish to speak on 40 or 41? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is 46, and that was called special by Council President Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So Mr. Reyes and I are very proud this morning. This pin here, APA Great Places in America, Echo Park was the first neighborhood in Los Angeles to be chosen by the American Planning Association as one of the 10 best places to live in America. It was the first, I think, majority Latino neighborhood in the history of the award, and one of the... If you look around the country, we're the only one that was chosen, of all the neighborhoods in California, the only neighborhood. Mr. Reyes and I have the great honor of representing Echo Park. One of the reasons why I think Echo Park won this award, besides being such a beautiful community, a diverse community, a place where you can walk to get a cup of coffee or to go to the bakery, it's also a place where community is very active in ensuring that we stay beautiful, that we stay a place that is a real kind of urban oasis away from the hustle and bustle of the city. And this motion before us today is evidence of that, creating a filming district in Echo Park, which has been the result of a lot of hard work. I want to thank Mitch O'Farrell from my staff, my district director, who's worked very closely with the residents in Echo Park and the filming industry, just building on what Ms. Perry has done downtown and other places, to make sure that there are some rules to play by. We want to see filming, we want to make sure there's television and movie production in Los Angeles, but we also want to make sure that communities are empowered enough that when the rogue companies that don't play by the rules are there, that they are held accountable. This imposes 18 additional conditions for filming in Echo Park, and then we strengthen the tradition of filming there in doing this. Since the days of the Keystone Cops, which were filmed in Echo Park, this neighborhood has been a very desirable place to film. And in recent years, may have become too desirable, allowing some people to come in and dump porta-potties in front of neighborhood businesses, fire fake bullets off without informing the community that there would be that sort of filming when that can be done in post-production. And these additional guidelines will help preserve the quality of life for my constituents while supporting filming in Echo Park. So I want to thank the community, city officials, the industry and Film LA for coming together to help make this happen. My office was very pleased to be able to facilitate this process and congratulations again to Echo Park, one of the 10 great places to live in America. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Garcia. We have Councilman Cardenas.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Council President Garcia for creating this innovative process. I think it's important for people to understand and not make light of the fact that the movie industry in Los Angeles is a tremendous economic engine for Los Angeles. And with what's going on with the world economy and what's going on around the country, there's going to be no question that the aggressiveness of other communities throughout the world trying to take these jobs away from Los Angeles and Hollywood is going to be probably at a fever pitch. It's going to be as aggressive as anybody could have never imagined. Right now, you have municipalities and countries that are actually offering Hollywood to do filming in their communities and charging them zero taxes, giving them tax credits, basically creating a plus side for the industries to go over there without having to pay any kind of taxes or anything like that to the local community. That's how badly they want those jobs. So with all due respect, I think it's important for Angelenos to understand that it's innovations like this, they're going to help us remain the film capital of the world. We still are, but again, make no mistake about it, there are communities and even countries around the world that are trying to change that on any given day and with the economy the way it is right now around the world, I think that this kind of innovativeness is as important as ever before and hopefully we can do this again and again, Mr. President, and bring this kind of responsibility and balance to various parts of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Reyes.
I just want to rise and congratulate my colleague, Councilman Garcia, on not only his work in Echo Park and influence in the Illusion Park, but for the award of the APA. It is critical that we understand the unique character of our neighborhoods and to be able to celebrate it this way truly is a reflection of the strong community involvement, the leadership in the community, grassroots base that has evolved over time. Been working with that part of the district for the past 17 years and to see it rise to the level it has under the stewardship of Councilman Garcia and the enlightenment and stewardship of the community leaders does reflect the kind of recognition they're getting. But in terms of this motion, it's important that we have these special conditions. I recall about 15 years ago, they had a helicopter exploding over Illusion Park, it was part of a scene, the different Alien and Terminator and all those sci-fi. And the neighbors were just amazed at the level of distraction and the kind of alarm that it caused without proper notification. So we do need these special conditions and I thank you for moving this item. Ask for an eye vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. And it is a pleasure to represent Echo Park with you. Thank you. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We have items 40 and 41 to reconsider. Ms. Perry moves those. We can open the roll on reconsideration of 40 and 41, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And if there's no objection, we'll continue those for two weeks to the 22nd, please, of this month. With that, we have one item left, which is a closed session item. So in accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session to discuss these items. If it requires a vote in open session, we will come back in open session and take that vote. And either way, we'll be back in open session to finish up the meeting. Thank you to everybody who has come in today and if we can clear the chambers for closed session.